Okay. Good evening, I'd like to call the this March 19th special meeting of the Edison Public Library to order, let the minutes reflect that it is seven o'clock, please stand for the port of the Louvre.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands the obligation on your kind in their discipline, liberty, and justice for our home.
As required by the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975, notice of the schedule of this special meeting has been provided to the public by notices given to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, and Sentinel, posted on the library bulletin boards and website, and give it to the township courts office. Roll call, please.
Ms. O'Neil?
Present.
Ms. Kraus?
Present.
Ms. Mead?
Present.
Ms. Hale?
Excused absence.
Mr. De Pasquale?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Ms. Leary?
Excused absence.
Mr. Romano?
Here.
David Corr.
On there.
Oh, and Ms. Bassi.
Okay, I'd like to thank everybody for taking time out of your very busy schedules for attending this special meeting so that we can not lose any time, and I'd like to thank the architect, Anthony Ayovino, for attending so that you can answer questions that that came up at our regular meeting last week. I also want to remind the board that the board retreat will be held on Saturday, April 6th, right here at the North Branch. So, let's go to old business, which is a resolution to approve the G Meyer Group bid of $1,734,905 as the lowest bidder for the main library renovation project, and to proceed to award them a contract for doing the work. And I believe what we should probably do is have a motion and second, and then any questions and discussion.
Okay, so moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Now, are there any questions? Comments?
Did I get answers to the questions that I asked at the last reading?
That is why we have the architect here. I don't know whether you had a chance to read some of the things that were the documents that were shared.
I'm in the middle of the lawsuit right now, so I have to be careful how I talk.
Okay, but some of the questions, I think some of the answers were within that. So, I know the questions that you had asked, I believe I had marked them down.
And we have shared them with Anthony.
Yes, so I think at this point I'm going to ask you.
Alan, do you want to? First of all, preferred labor agreement, I asked that for a reason. In, in the capacity where I am, I didn't want anybody to take and put a rat on front of any of our facilities. That's number one. The preferred labor agreement is one of the big major issues only because of the people that are involved in this town that want to constantly throw monkey wrenches into everything. So, is there a preferred labor agreement? And if there isn't, why not?
So, Joseph, the PLA is a project labor agreement, and there isn't one, we were never asked to include one, it is not a requirement whatsoever.
I didn't ask you if it was a requirement, I asked, is there?
There isn't.
Okay, thank you.
You will.
Then I asked about how the bids were pro, uh, put together, and there's alternatives. Now, the total, the total bid, the total price of the bid, is that incorporating all of the alternatives?
Yes.
Now, has any of the issues with remediation from asbestos, looking at the building, looking at the way the building was constructed, is there anything that would take and cause the library or the people that are running the library to run into a trouble or to a fact that there might be cost overruns because of stuff that wasn't, wasn't thought of, looked at, dreamt of, or whatever terminology you want to use?
No, I don't believe so. I can, I could expand on that.
That's what I asked you.
The only possible place I could imagine where you could run into asbestos is where we can't see it. We are completely demolishing the bathrooms, so time to time, depending on the age of the building, you might find the rap on the plumbing pipes inside of it. Anything that we were able to see, above ceiling, et cetera, we didn't see anything that would alarm us, we would consider suspicious.
If there's asbestos or debris found that wasn't in the original bid, is the secondary bids, do they cover that cost?
No, because you would never recoup the cost if it weren't there.
So, in other words, the bid can go from 1.75 million to 2 million?
No, no, if we're talking about localized, a couple of pipes, because remember, what we're demolishing is, you know, one story of piping, and this happens, right? We run across it all the time where we are in New Jersey, most of our projects are renovations. If it happens and a contractor suspects it, they have the right to say, I suspect that. You get it tested, which would be a few hundred dollars, maybe less than two grand to test, and then you get it removed, and it's probably 10 grand.
What is the alternative, what is the alternative bid?
So, we had three, right? So, the alternate number one included the spaces that were near the parking lot side of the building, which was the book return room, the teen center, and a cafe, whatever, basically spaces for the teens, that entire bar, if you will. Alternate number two was on both floors, it's the space in the center of the building, most of the base bid work is to the street front. And alternate three was smaller, it was just resurfacing the materials in the meeting room at that space, and a couple of offices at the front of the building.
Oh, well, I didn't mean in general.
Yep.
I'm just a dumb truck driver, and you can name that in, in everything. Why would the bid have to have alternates when, not for nothing, did we do our homework? Did you do your homework? I don't understand. What you're saying is, is that the bid is one price, and there's an alternate, and then there's an alternate. The total bid is one number. If we exceed that one number, we pay for it?
No, well.
Well, oh, no, wait a minute, it's coming out of my left pocket, but don't worry about this, my right pocket still has more money.
Give me a second, I'll explain it, so that everybody understands, right? So, the reason why we structured alternates was because we were concerned about the potential cost of the project, right? I don't know what the numbers could exactly be, I'm not one of the bidders, right? So, we had the core, the central part of the work, that was the priority, that we could, we collectively could live with, and that was the base bid. The worst case scenario is, the base bid's under budget, the rest isn't, you don't take the rest of it, right? So, the way the public contract law works is that we then have to structure the alternates in order of priority, you have to take number one before you can take number two, et cetera. So, then the next priority was doing the rooms at the front, on the ground floor for the teens, that was all bit one, and then number two was the center sections, and number three was what I described before, which was less important. Just so happens that all of it fits within the target amount of money. So, it was a very conservative approach to how you build a public project. It's very logical, it's the way to do it when money's of concern.
What do you want to do?
Are there any question, any other questions or comments?
So, what, like, what's our contingency if there are things that are found? Like, is there a, a limit? I mean, i- if it costs us, you know, is it going to cost $100,000 more for something because we're not seeing it? Is that a possibility? If that's the case, how does that work with the funds? Is that just comes, it just comes out of the capital that we have, or how, how does that, how does that work? I'm, I'm just, you just never know.
And it's a, it's a good question. Yeah. Absolutely, every job has change orders in some capacity. A lot of times, it's just, you know, the owner shopping, let's add a little more because we have some money left over. Right. Other times, it's opening a wall and not knowing what's in the wall, and other times, maybe there is something that's missed. We had 17 bids, we had over 40 companies pick up this set of documents, and 17 bids, that's unbelievable, right? More than half are below what we were thinking, you know, somewhere under 2 is a max. With everything coming out of the pandemic, it's like impossible, and nowhere these numbers are going to be, these are great numbers. So, what I would say is that, that where we are with the, with the G Meyer Group, and the base plus the three alternates at 1.7 and change, there's some slack in case we need it. Any change order that comes depends on what your protocol is, but especially if it's significant. Let's say the asbestos thing happens, and it is 10,000, 15,000, whatever it may be, then it should be at the board. Now, that said, there are times in construction where something pops up, and it can't wait for another month for a meeting, so it might be where you maybe set protocol, where maybe it's a hall instead of a, a board meeting where that gets done, or maybe there's a cap where the board president can just sign off on it to help, you know, keep the project moving along. The, I will say that, you know, we actually worked with three out of the four, actually, yeah, three out of the four low bidders, including G Meyer, and I'm happy that they were good. It's so much aggravation when you get a contractor that wants to do nothing but mess around, right? They're good. They were good on the job I had with, you know, assuming they're still good. So, what I mean by that is, there are contractors that just are not fair, right? Because change order is not a competitive pricing, they just mess with you. These guys were good and honest and fair, and that's about as much as you get in public bidding.
Okay, so, the, what of the 1,734? So, is there, so is there room, what I'm saying is, like, is it like, 1.5 is the actual cost of everything, and there's 200,000 for, like, is there any buffer?
No, I didn't include, I never, I typically don't include a contingency.
Okay.
Because sometimes I, I feel like, depending on who the contractor is, they think you have that money to spend because you do.
Right, right, right.
So, they, you know, they got to finish. So, I didn't set up a contingency in the bid, right? If it were what Anthony's talking about, is, you know, they would have filled out the form that said 1.7 and change, plus whatever contingency on top of it. So, I don't want to do that because I think it's, it's not as open, and I'd rather you know what the change order is.
Right, so then most likely, we should count on that it's going to cost us more than this 1.7?
Most likely, it'll cost a little bit more, and that's.
Do you, right, I, I mean, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just saying that, looking at the reality of it, is that you have this, and then we need to plan on as a board to say, we have, you know, we're going to possibly go, I'm just putting a number out, 50,000 more, it, it could be whatever it could be, but that's kind of how it works, you don't, you don't really put a buffer into that.
So, when we were, when we were thinking about the potential cost, I said earlier that hoping it would be under 2.
Right.
We consider, like, I usually throw in a 10% contingency in my calculations, but again, not in the bid.
Right, right, right.
I rarely have a job that gets anything like that. I think here, again, the mystery is going to be tear apart the bathrooms. Everything else is open, right? We're adding walls, we're not taking stuff away. It's all just what's above the ceiling, we're not putting in new mechanical equipment, we're moving some ductwork and stuff.
So, if you do find the asbestos, like, is that we shut down the library for a week for that to get fixed, or is that, like, is it just, you just contain that area, is it?
Yeah, it's, it's contained, if it's not disturbed, it's not airbroken, and you would get somebody in to test, and, and, you know, get either, I don't know if that contractor has certifications to remove.
Right.
Otherwise, you know, we can get them, get somebody, you know.
Is there any tile in the place that would be asbestos issues?
Or tile?
Yeah.
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Because everything's carpeted and, and not bathrooms.
That's what I'm saying, even the bathrooms, if you're tearing them up, it could be.
That's why, like, so there's nothing that we've seen that's obvious, that concerned.
Is there a average square foot of what this renovation is costing us?
Honestly, I didn't do that calculation.
Okay. All right, is it possible for you to get that thing?
Yes, sure.
Alan, I'm just curious, what, because we have so many projects happening in town, I'm just curious, is, I know there, it's not like you can compare, but I'm just curious, we have one at 600, we have one at 1,000, but I'm, I'm just curious where we fall into.
And understand, this is all interior, and a big part of it is, like, the body of the building is ceiling tile lighting and carpeting, that's a heck of a lot lower square foot then, new walls, and if you're doing additions and things, so this number will not compare to, to new additions.
Right, I, it's just, I've had some residents asking me, you know, hey, what is it called? Because, you know, the mayor puts out the, the square footage cost for things and stuff, so it's kind of something that people are, are kind of curious about, and I've been asked that, I'm like, I have no idea. You know, it's just, just curious to find out.
I'll send that to Alan tomorrow.
Okay.
Yes.
The confusion, I think, the confusion comes in where people hear that there's building going on, and the confusion comes from my end, okay? Renovating and putting, pouring more into a building, the demolition is not as bad, like when I'm putting up a gymnasium, or I'm putting up an auditorium, putting up 36 classrooms, multitude of different things, you know, you run into old construction pipe, stuff like that. What you're saying to me is, is that you're not taking the building apart, you're just adding to it and remodeling, is that correct, in my assumption?
That's, that is the bulk of the area of what we're doing. That's, but, again, the area by the, pointing like we're in the building, but the area by the bathrooms, both floors, that's your heavy construction. Everywhere else, it's, you know, ceiling lighting, carpeting, we're putting up walls, right, creating these new rooms and all. So, so it is less about demolition, like you're saying, it's more about new construction.
So, in other words, when people are asking about cost per square foot, cost per square foot is different in construction than remodeling?
Right.
Okay, so I think we kind of like have that cleared up at the main library. I'm really, the only thing I'm concerned about is contingent, contingency one, two, and if there's a problem. The bidding process, and I don't believe people understand it, okay? If I say it's going to be 1.79 million or whatever, and there's contingencies, okay? People want to know, and I think you've under, I think you've explained it, but if it's a $5,000 problem, or a $10,000 problem, why is it that the taxpayer has to pay all the time? What, why, after, after 1.79 million, and there's a $10,000 change order, I mean, aren't you making enough? I mean, let's be perfectly honest, architects are making 5%, 6%, whatever.
I'm not.
I mean, I'm talking to you guys driving around in Lamborghinis, and I'm driving around in a broken up pickup truck.
I don't have a Lamborghini. The, the work, that's additional work, is additional work. It's something, as I said earlier, sometimes our clients feel they have extra dollars, and they want to get a little bit more done, and they'll ask for something. Or, if it's not a part of their contract that needs to get done, they're not going to do it for free, so somebody has to pay them, and that's, that's the way it works.
So, so the question is, what, like, how much, how much money do we have available if there's, again, I'm just, it could be something small, it could be something big, but what's our thought process on if something is going to cost us 50, $100,000? Again, is that just come out of our capital? Like, how does that, like, what, how does that work? Like, what if, you know, I, I'm just curious.
I think it's hard to do the ifs, you know?
Yeah, you know, but if we have $6 million in the bank, and it's all for capital and buildings, then I have no problem with that. But I'm just curious, when you come to us and say, well, we need $100,000 more, where does that come from, is my question? That, that's, that might.
I really doubt it would be that, but to be honest with you, I think.
I'm just saying, any, yeah, but in all the, I'm talking about anything we do as far as buildings renovation.
Then it will come to us, then it will come to us.
Right.
And we will confer as a board with Alan's expertise and the architect's, you know, recommendations, and see what we need, and then we will have a discussion, and go to, yeah, then we will look at the budget and.
Well, that's, that's my, that's my point.
But that's what we have to do, we can't do the ifs, okay? We just need to get this started and go.
I'm not, I'm not talking about started, I'm, I'm just talking about, again, what do we have as far as contingency money to fund any of the projects we do? Like, what do we have, like, do we have, is, is that come out of the capital account? That, that's all I'm asking, I'm just curious how that, if that works.
Comes out of the capital account.
Okay.
But if we, I'll just make up a story. So, they're doing electrical work, and we realize that instead of 14 plugs in the wall, we want 18 plugs. So, we say to him, could you do another four plugs for us, and it's $600, we're just going to take that out of the regular budget? So, I mean, a small amount, so if it's.
That's what I'm looking for.
It's more likely to come out of the capital.
Okay, that, that's all I'm looking for, I'm just wondering how we.
The financial statements, you know, you know exactly what you have.
I, again, I'm just looking, what you're selling me is all I'm asking, okay? The small will come out of this, if, you know, if, if, again, I know the what ifs, if it's, if it's a $200,000 thing, that's just going to come out of our capital, is what I'm saying, that's, okay, and again, I know it's not going to be that, I'm just asking the financial process of how that works, that's all I'm asking, so, that's all. But, you know.
I understand.
Right, that's all, just curious.
All right, so you think we are ready to call the vote? Yes, sorry.
So, just to put it in simplistic terms, and just looking at, at numbers, just raw numbers, right? We have up to 2 million, right? Okay, no, but I'm just saying, we just, we have up to 2 million, you, they came in at 1.7, all right, or 1.8, we'll just round it up.
1.73.
Right, we'll round it up to 1.8, taxes, whatever. At that point, we still have 200,000 for incidentals, as a cushion, and I don't think we should start to worry until it goes beyond that 200 plus thousand, if, if there's anything that happens.
Yeah, I would hope that you're never anywhere near.
Right, but, you know, but so you, they, they talk about the incidental, so, you know, you're saying it could be 10,000 to remove, you know, asbestos and redo whatever have you. So, now we're at, you know, 190,000.
Right.
So, just looking at the raw numbers, I know we have a cushion. How often, how often on a project like this do they actually utilize all of that cushion?
Very rarely. So, a- a- again, like, we answered before, and to me, the unknowns are fairly minimal on this project, which gives me some comfort in that, and I do think, again, the unknown here, another unknown is quality of your contractor, but we've worked with them in the past for a project at Bourbon Community College that was bigger than this, and they were, they were good, and they were fair, and again, that's, that's a lot. So, you know, I, I think there has to be some tolerance for some cushion, but I would hope everything's getting where you're, 10%. You know, I, I want you to be as low as possible on that, because you still, you know, you have furniture, and you have other things to do, to fix the place out when you're done, and want you to have as much money even when you get to work on this building. You know, this, the, the main should be straightforward.
Any other questions or comments? All right, let's, let's have our roll call vote, please.
Yes, ma'am.
And do we need to, I'll just reread the resolution. A resolution to approve the G Meyer Group bid of $1,734,905 as the lowest bidder for the main library renovation project, and to proceed to award them a contract for doing the work.
Make a motion?
Well, we do, we do have a motion, yeah, we have a motion. And a second, so thank you.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. De Pasquale?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Ms. Bassi?
Yes.
Motion carrying.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you for asking, you know, very reasonable questions, and thank you very much for being here to be able to answer them, it's really very much appreciated. I don't know, you had mentioned, is this an appropriate time to even discuss or hold off until the April meeting? I think we hold off until the April meeting. That, you know, for anything, if there was, to give Alan permission, if it was like a, a little amount, if something were to happen, but we haven't even started.
We haven't done anything yet.
So, let's not do that.
So, you know.
It's premature.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Premature, I need to.
Yes.
To sign the contract on your behalf, and it needs to go back to, I'm carrying Ayovino to share with G Meyer, and so, the first thing, I guess, will be for them to contact us for an initial meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do a kickoff meeting, have them come to the library, you know, anybody who wants to come to that meeting, you know, you know, through Alan and Pat, and, and I do want to say that, you know, during this entire process, if anybody asks questions, you know, you know, we just get to be through that, and I'd be happy to come to whatever meetings or answer whatever.
So, I love that, I just do have a question, as the project goes on, are there milestones that there'll be reports back to us, and this is done, is that just Alan, something you'll be doing, and your directors afterward, or, okay, and then if there's?
Yeah, with construction consultant, that is going to be watching the project, or is that?
With, our office will, our office will be doing that, and, and at every meeting, we'll do minutes, that will get circulated, that will give you an update, that Alan can then circulate to the board, so you know what open issues there are, and potential change orders, and approved change orders.
Yeah, just.
And general problems.
Yeah, just like if there is asbestos in that situation, just, I mean, obviously, you're just going to take care of it, and even if it's not more money, but those things that just be, it'd be nice for us to be aware of as much as what's happening.
And, and our meetings are, on average, every, every, we'll have a regular job meeting at the same, right, with contractor, with the library, all right? So, you, be, whoever needs to be there can be part of that meeting.
And I think at that first meeting, we will be able to begin a timeline for approximately how long this project is going to take, and what other things we're going to have to do to accommodate the contractor, and how we structure first floor, second floor.
Sure.
And their take on how they would like to proceed with this, so we'll know more maybe by the next board meeting, who knows? Get everyone together in the room.
April 9th, right? April ninth, right?
Okay.
That would be excellent. That would be excellent. All right, so, we have no new business. Um, do we have any public comment? Any other public comment? All right, we don't need a closed session. And our next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, April ninth. The meeting is gonna start at seven, but remember, there's going to be a reception at five thirty to celebrate, uh, ninety, the ninety fifth.
What is it?
Birthday, April ninth.
Same day.
And it's at Main, remember, it's, it's at Main because it's the library's birthday. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Do we have?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, this meeting is adjourned, uh, at seven thirty, and thank you again, um, for taking the time to get this done now.